Doug Felkamp will be hosting our meeting. Please be aware, everyone will be muted except council members. The reason for this is to eliminate background noises and feedback. If you have a comment or question, please use the raise hand option in Zoom or the chat option. It's been roughly over seven weeks since the stay safe, stay home order. We have an unusually large agenda tonight. Tonight, I am limiting our time under member of the public comments to two minutes. At this point, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Abella.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Winsell.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have Councilman Winsell lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone, please be seated. Next, we have adoption of procedures for electronic meetings. Mr. Clerk, would you please take over?
Also, electronic meeting procedures. On April eighteenth, April fourteenth, 2020, Governor Gretchen Whitmer issued an executive order 202048, hereafter Order 202048. The order has been temporarily authorized remote participation in public meetings. To comply with the order, the city council has adopted the state council electronic meeting procedures. The city council intends to use Zoom meetings for its electronic meetings. The following procedure shall be interpreted and applied in a manner that is consistent with the provider services and technology. Pursuant to section 1E of Order 202048, the city council posts a special advance notice of any meeting held electronically in addition to any regular notice for a regular meeting. For any meeting to be held electronically, the council chair and the city clerk shall ensure that both a regular meeting notice and a special notice shall be posted in conformity with the Open Meetings Act. Pursuant to section 1E of the order, the city shall post any special notice on a portion of the city's website that is fully accessible to the public. The public notice on the website must be included on either the homepage or a separate webpage dedicated to public meetings and non-regularly scheduled public meetings or electronic meetings. Any address listed through prominent and conspicuous link on a website's homepage clearly describes its purpose. Pursuant to section 1 of the order, the special notice include the following information. The reason for the electronic meeting. Public communication procedures. Contact procedures. The notice shall provide the name and contact information of a person affiliated with the city that any person who may wish to contact members of the city council may set contact and provide input or ask questions on any business that will come before the city council meeting. The city council should designate a person who shall act as a contact person. However, the council chair shall designate the contact person at any time when the city council's body has failed to refuse to timely designate such a person. Procedures for persons with disability, the notice shall provide the name of the person affiliated with the city who assists any person who due to any disability auxiliary aid or auxiliary services related to the city council meeting. Reasonable advance notice shall be required for any request. City council shall designate the person who shall act as a contact person for the purpose of assisting with disabilities. However, the council chair shall designate such contact person at any time where the city council's body has failed to refuse or refuse to timely designate such a person. The contact person shall take the necessary action for the city to comply with the accommodations under the federal Michigan Disabilities Discrimination Act. The council shall arrange for a person or vendor to provide closed captioning for the city's electronic meetings. Public comment procedures. The members of the general public shall be able to participate in the city council meeting electronically subject to the following procedures. The special notice for the electronic meeting shall provide all information necessary for members of public to attend and participate in any such electronic meetings. Rules for public comment. The general rules addressing the city council during the public comment are unchanged. Special rules for public comment at electronic meetings. There shall be a host for any electronic meeting. The city council shall arrange for the person to act as host for any such meeting. However, the council chair shall arrange for such person to act as a host at any chamber of the city council's body that failed to refuse to timely designate such a person. The host of the meeting shall monitor all callers. The host will make sure that the members of public devices are generally muted in order to eliminate echoes, feedback, and distracting noise. The host will unmute the devices of the members of the public to give them an opportunity to speak at the proper times. Members of the public will be expected to comply with the following requirements. Their phones should be muted in order to eliminate echoes, feedback, and distracting noise. They shall not cause a breach of peace during the meeting. However, if they indicate that they would like to speak, either using the chat option or raise your hand feature, the host will unmute their devices, give them the opportunity to speak at the proper time. At that time, members of the public need to speak clearly and slowly. Only one speaker at a time will be allowed. Members of the public will have to wait for the meeting leader to provide to provide the floor to them upon their request to speak. And again, the appropriate time limit will apply. Also, follow directions of the council chair and enforce city council rules and procedures related to decorum. The only exception to this shall be the city council's body overrules the decision of the council chair. Members of the public wishing to attend and/or participate in the city council's electronic meetings may do so by utilizing join Zoom meeting. The special notices for electronic meetings shall provide all information necessary for members of public to attend and/or participate in any electronic. That concludes the reading of the policies and procedures for electronic meetings.
Um, before we begin, I'm going to ask Doug Felkamp to just tell, I see there's a lot of people that do not have a picture up. Can you just briefly tell them what to do to get a picture, to show their picture on the screen? And then we'll continue with the meeting.
Sure. Anybody who's going to speak or wants to have their picture shown can just click on the camera icon within their screen to start their video. Some of the videos had been, had been turned off as people came in. They can certainly turn them back on. And if they need assistance with that, they can use the chat feature to let me know. And I can try and start them from here, but I'll, I'll request them to start them.
Councilwoman Muscat, did you have a quick question before we begin?
I believe we're going to need a motion to approve the electronics meeting according to city clerk Prasevich. And I think it's time we make that motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I move city council approve the electronic held city council meetings in the order that we are doing it now on Zoom as we are doing now. Or.
Support by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. Okay, next, let's begin with agenda approval. Tonight, our clerk has asked us to remove item nine A. So do I hear somebody that will.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve order of business for April 28th, 2020, of this regular electronically held regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council with removal of nine A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have approval of the minute. First, we have the minute from the, pardon?
Go ahead.
First, we have the approval of the minute. This is the minute from the regular meeting of February 25th, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
Councilwoman Abdella.
I move that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting, February 25th, 2020, as outlined in item four A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is minutes from the regular meeting of March 18th, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of March 18th, 2020, as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. These are agenda items only that will limit it to two minutes. Raise your hand to be acknowledged using the reaction button on the Zoom, and we will call on you. We'll give you a few seconds here to find it in. Come on.
Yeah, we have one hand raised. Hold on for a moment.
Yeah, you were muted, sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that, by Stephen. And if he can unmute, that would be good.
Is that the guy right here?
Should.
I don't have video. I'm unable to, to start the video for some reason.
Okay, no problem. Can you please state your name and address?
Sure, my name is Stephen Ostie, 39577 Woodward Avenue, Bloomfield, Michigan. Attorney representing in Bryson Wireless. And I'd like to briefly comment on item 11A, which is the small cell deployment ordinance, second reading for, for this evening. Looks like my video started there. We, we had provided comments to your council back on March 5th with a comprehensive outline of some of the concerns we had with regard to the attachments. I raised these, I believe, at the last meeting where the first reading was done. But specifically, we noted that there were problems with both the types of attachments and conflicting language with respect to the ordinance, as well as Exhibit C to the permit, which requires a bond of a million dollars per small cell facility, which is not consistent with the, the language set forth in the, in the ordinance. And my concern is that I don't know if those comments have been conveyed to the council. You've seen both the, the written correspondence that we provided, as well as a red line document that raised the concerns. I was advised at the first reading by Mr. Roberts that the attachments were not going to be adapted as part of the ordinance and that if the second reading went forward, the attachments would be separately addressed through the administration. But my concern is when I looked at the agenda, all of those attachments are included as part of the ordinance. It's part of your second reading tonight, and I just wanted to confirm whether or not those are going to be adapted as is, or if there will be further.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm really sorry, but we're not allowed to comment at this point. We can only have you comment for one of the two minutes.
Understood, that's all I had. I just wanted to raise those concerns.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we have, Doug, can you bring that person in?
Oh.
It's in the chat room.
My name is Glenda.
Hi. I wasn't sure if it was appropriate time to talk about this because this is the first time I've been in one of your meetings. I don't know if you can hear me now.
Okay, Glenda, what we're going to ask you to do, if you have a comment on agenda item.
Yes.
You have two minutes. You state your name, address, and we cannot answer back to you. You can only make a statement.
Okay, I'd just like to make a statement about the 5G towers. I had received the letter saying that those were postponed until whatever was going on now by the governor. So my comment was, but you can't really respond because I'm just trying to understand how we can appeal this or any of these 5G towers going up.
All right, we can't, we can't respond at all.
So what's the point of this meeting then? Help me with that.
I'm sorry. I'm.
Come up at the.
You can say what you want, but we will not be responding any further.
Councilor, she could come on at the end also.
Yes, you can come on at public comment, which is number 14C.
And then you, we'll be able to answer you.
And then we can answer you then. We just can't do it here.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we've got somebody else. We've got, how do we? Okay, go ahead. We have a Sharise Tackle. And they don't want to speak.
Are you looking at the one with the iPad?
Yes.
I've chatted with that individual. I haven't gotten a response, so I guess you can move on.
Okay, because, all right, we've got one that says they're trying to speak next. Somehow their name in video is disabled. Bring that up. It's the one I just brought up. Let's see if. It's unmuted. They should be able to speak, but they need to connect to the video, to audio. Mr. Felkamp, would you like to, there. Okay, we got his video up.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, there you go.
Hi, my name's Dana Parrish. I live in Dearborn Heights. I had one comment about item eight D. So Department heads. I can't remember which one it was. It's on Chief of Staff. I don't believe that there's a position for Chief of Staff within the city charter. But on eight D, it mentions appointing a chief of staff. I just wondered where that was located in the city charter. Thank you very much for listening, Steve.
Thank you. Okay, let me mute that one. Okay, anybody else?
Councilor Chair.
Yes.
I just got, I don't know if I got the number, but the person, Shiraz, that she's trying to speak, she just, I just got texted.
Okay, let me, I, I let her on once and she didn't say anything.
I, I'm not sure.
Mr. Felkamp, can you please bring in Shiraz?
You know, you unmuted me and I'm Glenda. That wasn't, I don't think that's intentional.
Okay, you're in here, okay. I think he hit the wrong one, I'm sorry. I did, I unmuted. Mr. Felkamp?
Which, which individual was looking to get in?
Shiraz Teko, T E K K O.
Yes, they're in our chat and I'm, it's there.
I see, I see her name, but there's no picture. I don't know if you're able to.
He mute, no, Mr. Felkamp, you're muted again. Hold on, I'm muting.
It's fine.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing that one in my list, just a moment.
S, I see it, S H E I R A Z.
I've got it right here. How do I let him out of the chat room?
Oh, is, is she waiting to get in or?
No, she is in the Zoom group chat room. She wants.
I'm not, I'm not seeing that, I'm sorry, in my window. Hold on for a moment. Yeah, that is not, that individual is not coming up on my, my screen, just a moment. No, I'm not, I'm not seeing it. Council President, can you click on the more button and ask her to start her video or, and unmute it? I, I'm not seeing that one here.
Hello?
There's.
Okay, who is this?
Yes, this is Shiraz. I'm sorry, I had to log out and log into a different account.
Okay.
Yeah, you're coming under a different name. We would have never found you. We were looking for your name.
Yeah, I just did that because the other one wasn't working. I'm sorry. So my comment today is regarding the 5G towers going up in my neighborhood. I just want to express my deep concerns about the detrimental health effects of radio frequency electromagnetic radiation emitted by 5G towers. These towers will emit higher frequency radio waves than previous technology, meaning that we and our families, our children are going to be exposed to more radiation than ever before. In 2018, the National Toxicology Program found clear evidence that cell radiation causes cancer and breaks in DNA. Also, in 2018, the California Department of Public Health published guidelines admitting that scientific studies link cell tower radiation to DNA damage, reproductive harms, cancer, and learning disabilities. Elsevier also published an article arguing that 5G radiation will contribute to a negative public health outcome from both physical and mental health perspectives. Now, the FCC currently outlines safety guidelines for radio frequency energy exposure limits, but these guidelines are badly outdated and have not been updated since 1996. The Government Accountability Office issued a report stating that the FCC should formally reassess these guidelines as they have not, as they may not reflect the latest research on radio frequency energy exposure. There is a lack of transparent research which proves 5G radiation exposure is safe. However, there's a plethora of credible information showing possible detrimental health effects. What actions can be taken to limit the towers being put up right outside of our homes? What actions can be taken to move the new towers which are already been put up outside of our homes? I want to wait and see if this radiation causes cancer or other devastating illnesses to our families. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else? We got another chat. Doug, are you seeing anybody?
I do not see anybody.
Let me go in here because I think there's somebody waiting. Okay. All right, that should be it. All right. At this point, we're going to move forward with our agenda. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve fund transfers and current claims, six one through, I believe it's E four, as outlined. Did I miss any?
Report.
Yeah. It goes to E four, yes.
Yes. Six one through E four, as outlined.
Or.
Support by Councilman Abdella, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bid. This is DPW Director Selmy, bid award 2020 lead water service replacement program.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Director Public Works John Selmy and award the bid, the 2020 lead water services replacement program, be awarded to the lowest bidder, which is all seasons underground from Tipton, Michigan. The amount is $835,525 and approve a field engineering and contract administration budget for waitrim of $50,000 and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract agreement as outlined in item seven A.
Support.
Support by, was that Councilman Abdella?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any questions directly related to this item?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, so the $50,000 for a waitrim, are they responsible for inspecting for quality assurance of the work that is being done? I know it's in engineering, but who's, who's responsible for inspecting the work completion for each, each house to make sure that it's done properly?
Madam Chair, this is John Selmy.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me? Okay. So yeah, so that, that is for the inspection, for the completion of the, of the interior plumbing, any type of inspections on the outside that need to have happened there. Secondly, with everything going on with the COVID, we're going to wait to execute the contract, but we're still asking for approval. So once things get on the other side of this and, you know, we're able to go into homes and people are comfortable to do this type of work, then we will take that action at that time. So, but we're just asking for approval now and we'll execute the contract at a later date, once things are hopefully better.
Thank you. Ready for the questions in regards to this?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is for Director John, this is for Director John Selmy. Just to clarify it for a lot of the residents, so that they can be clear that just for so many houses, they had that lead based piping coming into their home. If you don't mind, Director, if you could let the residents know how many homes that this specific contract is forced specifically?
Yeah, so this contract, it's roughly 200 homes that we've identified through historical records that the city has. On a go-forward basis, it's my belief that there are more out there. If the city ultimately chooses to do a meter replacement program, that'll help us to get into every home to identify the type of water service coming into the home. And then similar, we'd have to have a, a program continuing to replace those services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Selmy advertise for bids for grass cutting services on city-owned properties.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I move that we concur with Public Works Director John Selmy. The Department of Public Works is seeking approval to advertise for grass cutting services for city-owned properties for the 2020 season. Additionally, up to three years with city council's approval to extend the contract as outlined in item seven B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any questions directly related to the?
Council Chair.
Item, Councilman Muscat.
Uh, the, the bids, do they go through the comptroller or the clerk's office when they submit them?
Ultimately, they are opened in, by the comptroller's office. At a specified time, all the bids have to be received and then they're open publicly. But we are looking at some other options to do it electronically because of, of everything that's going around, you know, happening in our country right now or in the world, that to do bids and have people gathered in a space is probably not the wisest thing to do. So we are looking at doing some electronic bidding, which other communities are doing, and that's available to us.
Well, that would, then they would send them electronically to the comptroller, correct?
Correct, to, to an email address that would be secured and it would be opened at the specified time with one person that has access to that. So there's an audit trail so that we can manage those bids. Were opened publicly by one person.
How are we going to be notified where they're going to be able to send them to?
Uh, well, we will put that on, so we use BidNet. We, when we put that on BidNet, we will detail exactly where the bids have to go, what time they have to be there, and what's needed in the bid packet.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, so my, my recommendation, I guess, I don't have to speak for the next item two for seven C for that. I'm sure it's going to be the same company maybe, but if it is, I would recommend to do two years with one option instead of three years. And also the other thing, I just want to make sure that hopefully that we don't have limitations on, or specify what equipment like we did last time.
So Councilman, if you remember, we, you, you brought that to our attention last time and revived that bid last year. And it is not specific on type of equipment, but it does say it has to be in working condition. And it does say a specific size, so we don't have somebody bidding with a push mower, right? So a lot of these commercial, or these big properties are going to need, you know, commercial type mowers. So we're not specific on brand or type, but it must be in working condition and that is in there. It's pretty general, it's in the document.
Thank you, Mrs. Selmy.
Director Selmy, I have a question. When will we be able to take care of these in-house? I know that that was what we were gearing toward.
So, um, that, that is something that, you know, we looked at. And in light of the current economic situation, for us, minimally, we'd have to hire full-time people, probably four or more to, to take on this task. This is a huge task. You know, that costs, you know, that's, that would be a council's decision if they wanted to do that in the budget, in the upcoming budget. So I think it's more effective, as much as I'd like to do it in-house, with the financial issues that are going to be coming down the road for this community and all municipalities. I personally don't know if that would be prudent at this time.
Got it. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Just like Councilman Bazey brought it up, and it's the same thing I was going to bring it up. I totally agree with him. It should be no more than two years at the initial stage. And then we could go ahead and renew that for another two years or one year, you know, for that matter. But I think three years to commit somebody is too long right now.
Okay, and that's, and that's fine. And I have to redo the document anyways because this was all, was on the March meeting and all the dates were geared towards the upcoming meetings and deadlines. So that all has to be revised, so I can revise the contract term to meet what the council's pleasure is. And secondly, on that note, so seeing that best case, we not going to be able to award this probably not till early June, maybe to mid-June, depending on how quickly everything gets strong, get the bidders in. In the interim though, we still going to need to start cutting grass. So I guess my question to the council is, can we continue to use the vendor that we are using now until we award the new contract? Or otherwise, we'll have to, you know, I personally don't want to wait six weeks to try to catch up on grass, especially on some of these parcels, you know, the incinerator for one is a huge parcel. So be my recommendation that if the council agrees to use the current contractor until we award the new contract.
That would be on a month-to-month basis.
Is next, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you. Actually, that was my line of questioning for the director. I'm looking at seven B and seven C, the timeline, considering this probably should have been done in March and your bid process is what, at least thirty days? And how is that going to look with the grass cut? Because like my grass has already got to be cut like tomorrow. So that was.
So that's why I say, so this, this document was for the March twenty-fourth meeting, I believe it was, or whatever that meeting was in March, and obviously everything got canceled from them. So so going forward now, if the council approves tonight, tomorrow, and Thursday, I'll work on the document, get it prepared, put the correct dates in there, put the correct term in there, then I can put it out to bid if the council agrees for me to put it out to bid today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion?
Councilor, Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
After we vote on this, can we make a motion to either continue with the grass cutting services we have now till the bid, till the bid process goes through? Because as our DPW Director John Selmy said, we need to start cutting grass. So I think it would be.
Director Selmy, is that necessary?
That's, that's up to the council. I mean, we've, we've used them last year as the same contractor. So I mean, I guess that's a procedure thing for you folks. I'm asking the council to allow us to use them going forward till, you know, we get a contract hired. I don't know if a vote's needed or not. I'm not sure about that part.
Clerk?
What was the question, Madam Chair?
Do we need to take a vote to continue using the current grass cutting company until we get proper goods to enter a contract with the new one?
I don't know when the contract expired and what your action was the last time that you did something, to tell you the truth.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
Yeah, I heard the director say, is it all right if he, he's trying to get a feel for the councils, is it all right for him to use the current contractor for the next five, six, seven weeks until the bids are all taken in, reviewed, and awarded to somebody? And I heard Councilman Muscat say he sounded like that was a good idea and I think we need either concur or not concur.
Madam Chair.
Now, I have, I have to acknowledge Council Secretary.
Madam Chair, I think you guys at your March eighteenth, I don't have the minutes right in front of me, but I think at your March eighteenth meeting, you extended it to the current contractors through April thirtieth. So it sounds like it would be appropriate now, like Director Selmy said, to extend it till whenever. But you'll have to amend the agenda, or not the agenda, the motion.
Okay. Councilman Abdullah?
Councilman Bazey was first. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. No, I was going to say pretty much what was, Councilman Muscat mentions that we vote on this and we add another motion after this to extend them for five weeks or six weeks.
I agree. I mean, does anybody disagree on council with that?
No. I was going to say exactly that, six weeks and then after that on a week-by-week basis.
Yeah, because. We're just taking this.
Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Who made, who made this motion on this?
Council Secretary.
You talking about today or on March eighteenth?
Who made the motion on seven C?
I did.
Seven B.
Oh, seven B. We're on seven B right now.
That was, that was Councilman Abdullah.
Councilman Abdullah, can you make your motion to include that?
Could you include it, do you include it so we can get either month-to-month or?
So presuming this is what you guys wanted, I amend my motion to add on there that contract would be extended for an additional six-week period from April thirtieth, at which point the contract will continue on a week-by-week basis.
Support.
As outlined in item seven B.
Support.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is ordinance and animal control Director McIntyre to advertise for bids for grass cutting services residential and commercial properties.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
I move we concur with our ordinance Director Jack McIntyre and approve the advertisement for grass cutting services for residential and commercial properties under ordinance enforcement for the 2020 season. And then we also include an extension for up to two years with the City Council's approval.
Do I hear support?
Madam Chair.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat?
Support, but I have a comment on that also.
Okay, is it a question directly related to this motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Shouldn't we add on the people who are cutting the grass now be extended?
Yes.
Also?
Yeah, same thing.
Okay.
Can you redo your motion, please, to it?
Yes. And include the, for now, the contractor that the city is using until the bid's awarded.
Support.
Okay, Councilman Muscat supports it. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I'm sorry, with due respect to Councilman Robert, I don't think that clarifies that. I think it's got to be said exactly the same way as the last one, which would be that this would be extended from April thirtieth on a six-week period and then an additional week-by-week basis after that. Just to be clear, I'll probably add that.
I'll see then.
I concur.
Yeah.
So I amend my motion that the ordinance department, the ordinance department has approval to advertise for grass cutting services for residential and commercial properties under ordinance enforcement for the 2020 season and maybe for additional time, up to two years with the council's approval and to use the current contractor the city is using for cutting grass under ordinance enforcement for up to six weeks. And then after that, if necessary, to be approved by the council on a week-by-week basis.
Support. Councilman Muscat, are you still supporting?
Support.
Supported again by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Chief of Staff Laslow request for proposal appraisal services for 2016 home acquisition grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, I mean, Abdullah?
I move we concur with Christina Laslow, Chief of Staff, requesting permission to seek proposals as it relates to appraisal services for the 2016 PDM PJ zero five grant for home acquisition on Courier and Hanover, West of Telegraph, and requesting our body to authorize the city to seek requests for proposal for appraisal services under the guidelines of the 2016 Home Acquisition Grant as outlined in item seven D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
Okay, is there, is this a question directly related to this actual?
Yes.
Councilman, go ahead.
Is this part of that new grant that we were going to get in that the administration didn't want to go with because there was, obviously there was something wrong with it? Or is this part of the old grant that we had previously? I think that might go to Mr. Mayor.
I can answer that, too.
Or, yeah, Ms. Laslow?
This is the, and I apologize, I have a wild kingdom in my house, but on the 2016 grant is the grant for the homes on Hanover and Courier, West of Telegraph. The, if you're, it was an older grant, but no homes were purchased yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Selmy bid award for Lower Rouge, I'm sorry, Lower Rouge CSO L dash forty-three sewer separation program.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Director of Public Works John Selmy, who has reviewed and concur with Waitrim's letter dated April sixth, two thousand twenty, that Lawrence M. Clark from Belleville, Michigan submitted the lowest responsible bid for the Lower Rouge CSO L forty-three sewer separation program, and they are requesting the contract for this project to be awarded to Lawrence M. Clark in the amount of three million one hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred and fifty and approve an engineering budget for Waitrim in the amount of three hundred thousand as outlined in item seven E.
Support.
Okay, support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money in the engineering to this, I feel, because this is, I, I'm, I don't see what the big deal is on separating these. I mean, this is not the first time we're doing this and how much engineering has got to go into it. I don't know, it's like ten percent. I mean, that's a lot of money.
So this is John Selmy again. Dan Brooks is on the line. Sophie wants to chime in to that cost also, but this is more for, this is the contract management, this is the inspection for the program for the installation of the water main, for the sewer separation, for the new installation of storm sewer, and the road replacement as we're taking out the road and rebuilding all the roads in this project area. So there's quite a bit of inspection, testing that is required. You know, if Dan's, I believe he's on the phone, he can.
He can talk if he wants.
Yep, he can, he can give you some more detail on top of that.
Thank you.
Dan Brooks, did you want to comment? You are unmuted. Can you hear?
I think the answer from Mr. Selmy was good enough.
Okay, thanks. For some reason, Mr. Brooks is not coming through. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports. Pardon? Oh.
I said, thank you.
Next, we have reports from Mayor, the declaration of local state of emergency dated April twentieth, twenty twenty.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I believe this is a received note and file. Can I get confirmation on that, please?
Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk, could you please advise?
I think that's an approval. Didn't we approve of one?
The first one.
Okay. I mean, I'm with the mayor here. He wants to say something. Go ahead, Mayor.
If the council would approve it and it will remain in effect, the only things that I've used this emergency power for was in the case of we were running out of medical supplies in the ambulances and we authorized refreshing those two ambulances. In addition, we had some vendors, one of which was the fuel that threatened to cut us off. So we asked that, so we authorized and the treasurer signed the checks for those. The only other item that I used it for was when we were starting to have police officers testing positive, then we ended up authorizing an adjustment in the work schedule to complement so that we would have enough staff. We were getting concerned when the Detroit Police Department was showing so many cases. In addition, because of the great number of rescues, I authorized in the fire department the implementation of an additional ambulance. And so those are the kinds of things that I've been using this particular power for. I've not in any way, shape, or fashion have done anything that I don't think any of you would have concurred in.
Yes, and to add on to the mayor, if you look under the emergency claims, E one, E two, E three, and E four, those are the ones he's addressing at this time. And they are for medical supplies and then RKA petroleum for motor fuel. So that's all we have here for emergency claims, which is all what the mayor has said.
So Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
So I will make the motion, then I move that City Council approves the declaration of local state of emergency dated April twentieth, twenty twenty as outlined in Agenda Item H A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constance. Any further discussion in regards to?
Oh. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, for the mayor, can you clarify at the end? You said an additional ambulance. I missed exactly what you meant by that.
Yeah, we ended up, we ended up running two north, two south on ambulances where normally we would have an operation free. And because of the number of calls, the fire chief and I talked about the fact, and so I authorized the implementation of additional squad.
Oh, additional personnel, okay.
Yeah, because it was just so many calls.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Bazey?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable approving this unless it has specifics as, I mean, if the mayor says it's for our first responders or firefighters and police officers, I would like for it to state that and nothing else in addition to that. So I think if somebody makes a motion just, just for our first responders, firefighters, and for the police officers, I don't mind approving, but just to leave it vague like that based on, you know, verbiage outside what's written in, in the motion in front of us, I don't feel comfortable approving it.
Can I, can I mention one other item? Am I on?
Go ahead, Mayor.
The other thing, I mean, if you want to restrict it to police and fire, but the other thing that can happen, in fact, we had one crisis that we were watching real carefully, and that would be in regards to a major rainfall. They're talking about when we get near two inches of rain, that becomes a problem. So I think you should extend it for police, fire, and also the DPW, because I could see if in fact we end up with a critical amount of rain that in clearing services, I would utilize this to help our residents in that regard.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as it's specific in the motion that it just only includes firefighters, police officers, and DPW, I don't have a problem with that. Just don't want to leave that vague like the way it is.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would go ahead and amend the motion to add on the restriction to include police, fire, and DPW services under that emergency order.
Support.
Councilwoman Russell?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. Like, no, I want to add to that. See if we can add that the council have, get the common courtesy by the mayor to inform us of any actions he's going to take. Unless, except, you know, learning about this weeks or days later, and you know, just so we're updated on any actions that he's taking on this emergency situation.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Yeah, I'm happy to let you know.
How can we do that? I mean, how can you let us know, and how soon can you let us know after you decide to do it, or before you do it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make my pledge to you. I can't always, uh, I will try to make you aware before, but it is possible that when these emergencies come up, I need to respond, but I will try to let you know the same day.
Or Mayor, if you're not able to create an email to address it to everybody, if you could at least call me or text me, and then I'll send out the email to them and get them notified of it?
Yep, we can do that, too.
That might be the quickest way, 'cause you got my-
Thank you.
Councilman Abdullah?
Madam Chair, um, under the circumstances, based on this type of an, um, an addendum, I think definitely the emergency manager should be added on there, then if that's the case. You've got emergency manager, and then just possibly, I'm just throwing it out there, possibly the building department, just in case they have to get some sort of an authorization on something to do with building, but definitely the emergency manager, under the circumstances, should be a part of this authorization for the mayor, I think.
I think we're getting a little too far out of what this is meant to do, and it's just meant to be on a nine-one-one emergency basis only, like-
Right, but the emergency manager-
But that's my thought.
But I know, but, but the emergency manager in this particular case is definitely gonna be involved with anything and everything to do with this. So if that's the case, I think that should be included.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Bazzie?
Well, we're on Zoom now. I'm sure we're back on track, so I don't think we should open it too much, since we're back on track with Zoom meetings.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna say, limiting it to police, fire, and DPW is sufficient. The emergency manager works for me, and we work as a team, all the department heads, so you're, it's covered.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those, um, opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is a rent abatement request for Elite Sports Training.
Council Chair.
Man.
Councilman Abdullah?
Uh, I move that we concur with Mayor Dan Pletko. He's gotten a request from Elite Sports Training, asked for rent to be abated for the months of April two thousand twenty and May two thousand twenty. And, uh, this would be, it was suggested by the Corporation Council that the rent can be abated on a one-time basis, but the City Council obviously have to approve it. So, uh, this motion is by myself, Dave Abdullah, and seconded by-
Ray Muscat.
Ray Muscat, to abate two monthly rental installments of six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, each owed by, uh, Lisi Elite Sports Training LLC for the months of April two thousand twenty and May two thousand twenty, pursuant to the Camfield Ice Arena Improvement and Sports and Recreational Facility Lease Agreement between the Lisi and the city. This is a one-time action and is based on the current pand- pandemic. This one-time action shall not be construed to amend the lease agreement or to otherwise alter the party's obligations under the lease agreement as outlined in item eight B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Um, I have a question again. Councilman Abdullah, what was the amount of the-
Six thousand seven hundred and fifty.
And that is only for March and April?
Two, two, uh, two monthly installments of six thousand seven hundred and fifty each, correct?
Hmm.
Okay.
April and May.
Madam Chair.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I did speak with, uh, Lisa Sora, the property, uh, Mr. Mike Mackey, and I spoke with him just to get a clarification as far as what is going on. He's pretty much all done, he said. I mean, driving by, visually it looks like it's all done, but I want to confirm with him. He said he's pretty much all done. His only issue is he cannot get a final inspection order to open because of the pandemic, and that's why he's looking for that abatement, which I, I approve and support.
I, I would like to see if possible, if he cannot get it by the end of April, that we extend it further, 'cause it's, it's not his fault at this time if we can't get the inspections.
So you're suggesting you say more than April, May?
I, I would say that we give it to him until he gets his, um, final, because we don't know what's gonna happen, how we can, you know, if this gets pushed out another four months, and this is only a one-time abatement, if we can't come back, I mean, it's not fair to him. We should be able to tell, say until he gets his final on his building.
CFO.
Yeah, CFO.
Well-
Can I, can I say one thing?
Sure, Mayor.
Uh, even though it says in here one time, if he was not able to open in June during the May agenda, we come back and ask you to abate additional months. We're not, we're not saying this is it. We're not gonna be flexible, because, uh, it's not his particular problem, and it's not something we can solve with the virus. So don't look at this, we, we, we said it was a one-time, but we could always come back with you at the end of May if we find out he can't open in June.
Can we amend that to say, uh, to remove the part where it says one time?
I don't care.
Councilman Abdullah, can you amend that?
Yeah, I, I amend my motion that, uh, the rent can be abated, uh, based on City Council approval.
Then do I hear-
Taken out the word one time, taken out the word one, uh, on a one-time basis.
Okay, do I have a, do I hear support?
Second.
Councilwoman Bazzie supports. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is a rent abatement request for Unida Golf Services.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I feel this is the same as the previous, um, uh, motion that for, for the golf course, and I move that we abate it, uh, as outlined in nine, eight C, with the provision that he could come back if golfing doesn't open up.
Support.
Uh, and they can continue to do this monthly or bi-weekly, or however they're gonna do it.
Councilman Muscat, the golfing is already open.
Oh.
So there are people golfing.
Okay, so then this will just be for the months of April and May of two twenty, as outlined in eight C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazzie. I'm gonna start having everybody use their hands, 'cause I was watching when the screens lit up, and now they're lighting up at the same time. So start using your hands, and I will call on you, um, I'm, the Zoom hands.
I don't have that, I'm sorry.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
No, that's why I'm raising my hand.
Okay, I'm sorry, did I, or-
It's okay.
Councilwoman Wenzel?
Yeah, uh, what are we gonna do about the, uh, monthly payment that, uh, the golf course owes the city for the next, uh, this month and the next few months?
That's what we're voting on.
That is that, not the month, not the rent, but the, uh, that we're voting on, the monthly payment that, that they owe us for a part of the contract? Is that different than the rent, or is that including the rent? Mr. Mayor, can you answer that?
Yeah, it, it is, it is his, uh, fee to the city, and he was shut down when the governor ordered, uh, the abatement, so that he was not considered an essential service, so it, he-
Okay.
Reached out that he was not having any revenue came in. The first day he opened was Monday, and in fact, we were there today, uh, to get publicity that the golf course is now open and to encourage people to come out, but, uh, he got hurt significantly when-
Sure.
He was told, and they are not using any carts. He's got rules up, uh, in regards to, uh, social distancing and other restrictions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is department head appointment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Mayor Dan Pletko, um, in accordance with Section five point one-five of the City Charter, uh, for appointing the following department heads, eh, as outlined, I'm not gonna read them all. Uh, this would be every department, including Chief of Staff, as outlined in item eight D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constance. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazzie, I'm sorry, you're down there, okay?
Okay, so, a- again, you know, this there, I, I don't know, uh, somebody addressed it earlier. Uh, there's a few items. The first one, there's no date on here, so it doesn't say effective when and expires when, so I have a problem with that. The second item is, uh, there's nothing in our charter. I looked at our charter, it says Chief of Staff. If we're gonna add a position, it's not in our charter, and if that's gonna be the case, it, it never went in front of the council. If that's gonna be the case, then it should go in front of the council to approval, and we should have the, what the criteria, the qualifications for that position, what, what the mayor considers as a chief of staff, what their responsibilities are. Right now, we haven't seen anything. And, uh, the third item is, uh, I believe, uh, our, our police chief, uh, Petrie, he's gonna retire in the next couple months, so that's why I addressed that question about the expiration date. If, uh, if that's still the case, his retirement's gonna be sometime this summer, then I don't, I don't know why we have that, that still without an expiration date.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, we're gonna, that was a question from the mayor, councilman.
Okay, if you open up my mic, um-
It is open.
All that is required under the charter for the department heads, and that's what's covered here, is that I notify you of the department heads. And so it's a received note and file, you do not need to concur. It's, it's just a official notification, and I, and the date of the letter was April sixth. It was originally intended for the first meeting this month, earlier in April, so I satisfied the requirements of the charter.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
That's all I was gonna say was, yeah, I think it's just a received note and file. I don't know that we concur. I think we concur, just to receive note and file.
I believe that, uh, we can also take this up during budget hearings also. This is not really a good time to do this. If we have any disagreements about, uh, people's titles or whatnot, we can take it up then.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you have a motion on the floor, but that need to be amended, 'cause, um, there, that is correct. It is a received note and file. And so therefore, I think we had a motion on the floor to approve it, is that correct? So it needs to be amended?
To concur, I thought, I heard someone say so. I think it is amended to just receive note and file.
That would be Councilman Abdullah.
Okay, so, um, this is to just, uh, state that received notice and filed for Mayor Dan Pletko, uh, in accordance with Section five point one-five of the City Charter, appointing the following department heads as outlined in item eight D.
Or, or-
Okay. Received note and file.
Need to take a vote on that, Madam Chair.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to say. Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No. Councilman Bazzie and Council Chair Melonowski, may I as well? No. It passes. Next item on the agenda is Assessor and Corporation Council Appointment Confirmation. Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question. Can we split these two into two motions? 'Cause you're, the letter is asking for confirmation concurring with the appointment. This is the, the two positions in our city that requires council concurrence. And one is a, um, the assessor, and the other one is a corporate attorney, uh, counselor. Can we separate these? Is my question.
Yes, I should, we should. I agree.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
But if we're gonna separate them, shouldn't they have been done in the beginning of the meeting, though? 'Cause we approved the agenda as submitted.
We can do it.
Follow the normal protocol for Roberts rules, I'm fine. I, I, I agree that we separated, provided that we can, so maybe-
Okay, clerk, please clarify. Clerk, would you like to chime in on that?
Uh, you, you should take the item as it is on, on the agenda. Um, you can, um, approve it, you can, uh, send it back to the administration, you can, um, not approve it, and then you can address it after you, you, uh, take that particular action on that first, um, item, which is, um, eight E.
But, Madam Chair, clerk?
Councilman Abdullah?
But can, also, and I understand what you're saying, but can we split it right now as per Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton? Today, right now?
I, I don't, I don't think that's the, the proper action, um, I think-
I was thinking you couldn't, since we approved the agenda the initial way, which was then together. So to me, it seemed like we'd have to, can't, we'd have to like, n- not approve it at all, and then bring it back to the next council meeting, possibly.
Are we talking about eight D or eight E? Can we clarify that?
Eight E, eight E.
Eight E is Assessor and Corporation Council Appointment Confirmations. Okay, I see how you're saying those are bundled. Um, if we refuse it, then they'll have to, we can refer it back to the administration and let them unbundle it. Councilman Muscat?
I move, uh, that we refer this back to the administration to separate the two.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
Well, yeah, we, we can do that, or we can, um-
Well, it's already done it, councilman. It's already taken-
Which, understood.
That's the motion's on the floor that we have to address right now.
All right.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor referring it back, say aye.
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 Those opposed? It's referred back to, um, next item on the agenda is Tax Increment Finance-
Council President? Uh, Tom is trying to get your attention.
Councilwoman Wenzel?
Yeah, just before we go any further, for the record, on, uh, nine D, I voted no.
I'm sorry, we're not on nine D, councilman.
I know, I meant eight-
I'm not gonna address it until we get there to avoid confusion.
Eight D, I'm sorry, eight D.
Oh, eight, eight C is already passed.
Yeah, I voted no on eight D.
Okay, he's voting the wrong, he, it doesn't, all right, thank you, so.
Okay, just for the record.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying me, I'm sorry. I thought you were going ahead. Next item on the agenda is Tax Increment Finance Authority, also known as TIPA, and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This is reappointment and appointment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
I move we concur with Mayor, uh, Pletko and reappoint Lisa Cordy of Cordy's Collision, uh, on Van Born and Dearborn Heights, William Davis, uh, on Lohman and David Hull, uh, on Tulane, uh, to the, both the Tax Increment Finance Authority and the Brownfield Authority, terms to expire, uh, in December twenty twenty-two. And then also to reappoint Donald Willis, uh, on Annapolis Street, and, uh, Dick Fetzer on McKinley Street to the Tax Increment Finance Authority and the Brownfield Authority. And then finally appoint, uh, uh, Mr. Ron Simino on McKinley Street uh, to both the Tax Increment Finance Authority and the Brownfield Authority, uh, to expire, uh, those terms to expire, uh, twenty twenty-one, to fill the, uh, appointment of Peter Zachary, who passed away, as outlined in eight F.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is under reports from city officials. Uh, we have Treasurer Riley sanitation mileage renewal.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
I move we concur with our, uh, Treasurer John Riley and approve the sanitation renewal as outlined in nine B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any questions?
Ma- Madam Chair, may I, may I speak?
Um, Treasurer Riley, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, this needs to be referred to Corporation Council so they can draft ballot language, so that it can get onto the ballot for the public to vote on, which would be the proper action. And, um, when I drafted this, we were hoping, uh, I was, you know, to get it onto the, uh, primary ballot on August fourth, but that deadline would be May twelfth, which may be your next regular council meeting. So I guess the, the hope would be then to get it onto the general election in November, and the deadline for that ballot language being approved by the cow, uh, by the council and submitted to the county is August, I believe the clerk said August eleventh, but we should get it done, uh, you know, in, in July, so that he has plenty of time to get that to the, uh, county for it's on the November ballot.
Thank you. Mayor.
Yeah, I want to thank our Treasurer John Riley for his efforts. But I would also like to suggest that a couple of the council members, two or three of you, volunteered to be part of the committee to get this passed. This would provide a big hole in our budget. It's something that has been approved for many years, and it pays for our sanitation. And we really could not operate without it. So if if two or three of the members, and while John is still here, he has always been the one that has led for this particular sanitation approval, and they can work with him before he leaves in regards to getting a campaign together. And I certainly will help.
Okay, thank you.
I would help also. I'm going to reword the motion, read the whole letter, Madam Chair.
Thank you, go ahead, Councilman Coniston.
There are two millages that make up the revenues used to pay for our sanitation. And the maximum allowable millages are set forth in item 9B. According to the audit report, there's an amount that the audit report indicates that the city should levy. So that I move that the City Council direct Corporation Council to draft ballot language wording for the renewal of the sanitation millage in time for the deadline for ballot wording, which is for the August 4th 2020 primary election. And the deadline is May 12th, per our deputy clerk, as outlined in 9B.
Or.
Who did I get that support from?
Dave Abdallah.
Councilman Abdallah supports that. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, Treasurer Riley again. I again, I don't know that we're going to be able to make the primary ballot for August 4th unless this unless you call a special meeting and this is drafted and approved before the May 12th, which is a regular meeting. Because this would have to be approved and submitted to Wayne County on May 12th. So so I guess as the way the motion was read, because this this letter obviously was for back in, you know, in March and was, you know, hoping to make that primary ballot.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Yeah, maybe we need to get Corporation Assistant Corporation Counsel Mark Roberts or anyone just to get the ballot language drafted so we can make it by May 12th, which is about 14 days away.
Mayor, do you think that's possible to do that?
You're asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, I it is not possible, I think, because ballot questions have to go to the state also to get approval. So really, we're talking about the earliest would be the general election in November. There's not enough time to get all this wrapped up. It would be it's impossible for all practical purposes. So I think the maker of the motion would want to use the the November general election, and we should certainly have enough time to get it prepared prior to that.
I can amend the motion.
Councilman Coniston. Councilman Coniston.
To let me amend my motion for the deadline for the ballot wording for the November 2020 election. A general, because the state is closed, Attorney General's Office is closed, there's hiring freeze in Lansing, all the law firms, everybody's working from home, if they're working at all. So the have the ballot wording for the November 2020 election is outlined or the November 2020 election.
Okay.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I think the treasurer to clarify for the the residents, is this millage, is it that the sole monies that we get to pay for sanitation, or is there is there tax money that goes for sanitation? And this is just to make up a difference?
Yes, so I mean, we we have a state millage that the letter outlines, and it was originally three mills. Over Headley, that's been rolled down to 2.16 mill. And now this voter approved millage of one mill has been rolled back by Headley to 0.9680 mills. So there's actually two millages that make up your sanitation revenue for the payment of the disposal of the trash, the pickup of the trash, the pickup of the recycling, and the compost and and disposal.
And that's the only revenue that the city gets to pay for this? We don't we don't have any other tax money from the residents? Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that.
Council Chair.
Oh, Councilman Yaki.
Yeah, I just want to clarify when we would need to have the language back to the council for approval. Treasurer Riley had mentioned the time, but what time would he be looking at as being the best time to do it? By what time?
If you could get that, I guess, in in June so that it can be approved. And and then, you know, there'd be plenty of time to hit the state needs to approve it, and then the clerk could get it to the county. You know, because I think that the deadline, according to the clerk, I I believe he said it was August 11th, that the that the ballot language had to be at the county for the November ballot.
Okay, then we'll aim for a meeting in May. So would that work?
That would be plenty of time.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Assessor's Office Kimberly Comer, nonconforming lots, Dearborn Warren subdivision number two.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with Kimberly Comer of the Assessor's Office, who had a resident, Ali Al Kirsch, that submitted a request for a lot combination that would be considered nonconforming in the Dearborn Warren subdivision number two. The process would involve splitting two plated parcels, which would result in two 40-foot 40-foot front foot lots. The city charter requires new lot to be created with 60 front feet. However, in this circumstance, 40-foot front lots would be uniform with the rest of the neighborhood. And this is as outlined in item 9C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
So just for clarification by some of the council members, I drove by this particular property. Basically, it is 80-foot lot with one house in the middle. And what he's gonna do, the person is gonna split it and build two houses on two 40-foot lots on that block. Even though that doesn't quote unquote technically conform, all the houses on that block and all the other blocks within that full neighborhood around highest are all 40-foot lots. So this would definitely be very similar to everything else in the neighborhood. So I I support that personally.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat, do you have a question directly related to the same?
Yes, and I I'm going to, if you don't mind me asking, Councilman Abdallah a question.
Sure.
When he's gonna split these lots and build a house on each one, are they gonna be one of these tall monstrosities that don't conform with all the other houses?
I don't know, I don't know the guy, I don't know, I don't know anything like that. I just checked into whether, you know, whether that would conform as far as can you build a house on it. And so as I drove by it, an 80-foot lot, we just gave approval on a very similar one on Gully, where they split an 80-foot lot into two 40-foot lots. Now, that works in our favor as a city, because now you're taking hypothetically 89. Actually, in this case, I looked it up, he bought it for 80,000. So you're taking a home where the city was paying ta getting taxes based on 80,000, give or take. And now we're gonna have two houses, each one being, even if they built the minimum new construction, you're gonna be around $280,000, $300,000 homes. So we're gonna be two, $300,000 homes, which would increase our tax base. But as far as the size, I don't know. But on a 40-foot lot, you'd be somewhat limited to what you can build. You're probably maxing out around 3,000 square feet, 3,200 square feet.
That's a tall house on a 40-foot.
It would be, yeah, as a colonial, it'd be a colonial, it'd be, you know, four-bedroom typical.
All right, thank you.
Which there are a lot of them throughout the city, in the North Heights especially.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, is there any questions directly related to this item that we haven't already commented? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Assessor's Office Kimberly Corner, nonconforming lots, Dearborn Telegraph Town Line subdivision.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with Kimberly Comer of the Assessor's Office, who had a resident Rodney Harold that submitted a request for lot combination that would be considered nonconforming in the Dearborn Telegraph Town Line subdivision number one. The process would involve splitting the alleyways off from the parcels to the east and adding them on the parcels on Telegraph Road per section 36-614. Combination nonconforming lots upon application to the city council. The city council may permit the combination in whole or in part of nonconforming lots of record into the building sites less than the size requirements established by the chapter, as outlined in item 9D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any questions directly related to this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is Controller Vance Budget Amendment Corporate Fund.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with Controller Linda Vance, who had, and we had a study session on this one. Above, who ordered that some amendments are needed to balance out the amounts for year end. For the fire department amendments, she has increased both the revenue and expense accounts that acknowledge the grant funds that were awarded and expenses paid by the grants. And she's appropriating from fund balance to balance out the departments. And this is as outlined in item 9E.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any questions directly related to this item?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Yeah, for, I mean, since we're getting towards the end of our budget year, I I still I still have a question on why we have $60,000 for the Corporation Council position. So obviously, I have an issue with that, I vote no for that one.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. All of these amounts, that it's actually meaning we're we're short in those budgets for that each department. Okay? And how did we get to be so far off in these things? Travel and education, $79,000?
What?
In in general government, travel and education, net change per department was $79,000 for the general government. Council service, contractual service was 60,000. I mean, we're, how do we, how do we pay these during the year when we've come up so short?
Okay, okay, Councilman, hold on a minute. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, you're misreading it. The when we had the budget meeting, and I think we satisfied everybody's questions, but there's almost, there's a million 900 of this balance, which is attributable to the Kinesic appropriation from the state of Michigan to the our Dearborn Heights Fire Department. So that that expenditure is a million 921892. In the general government, it's not travel, it's education, is 16,000, not 79. The 79 consist of insurance buyouts of 7,500, city-owned property 55, 568, and then travel and education was was really education. And this is employees that are going on to college to get their degree. The amount is an estimate for Corporation Council. I'm not sure if that's gonna be an accurate number. I think it's gonna come down in light of.
You're breaking up, Mr. Mayor.
But that that's kind of the the balance.
Well, I I read it correctly when I said, you know, travel and education, the final line there was $79,000. I'm just trying to figure out how we got so far off in each one of those departments.
To total 79,000 is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, the total of 79, a total of 60, 15, 60, and a $2 million, $2 million I can understand with the David Kinesik on 1.9 million dollars.
Okay. Councilman, let's let Controller Vance speak, she's low, she's raising her hand.
Thank you.
Okay, we had this discussion at the previous meeting. When you look at the general government, the 7,500 is just different people took the buyout instead of the insurance. It's an estimated number, just like all budget numbers. The 55,000 of the city-owned properties are the cap properties that the city bought. And we are not going to get money on those properties until the next budget season. So we incurred the expenses, we bought the properties, but we're not going to get reimbursed by the contractors until after the year end. So that wasn't something that was put into the budget beforehand. As the mayor explained with the tuition, it's just that we have several employees at this time utilizing the tuition benefits that are offered by the city to advance their education to further benefit the city. So it's it's come up. One of them is my deputy, she's trying to get a master's in accounting. So then, if you look at the corporate council, it's kind of been under budget for a little while. And I believe I sent a spreadsheet out to the council back in February showing the breakdown of the expenditures. And the 60,000 is there, but it's probably, I don't know if it's gonna fully take us to the end of the year. I want to get these done, I wanted them optimally done in February so that I could look at these numbers again when I do the year ends in in May, beginning of June. We're getting close there. And again, my assumption on this is even though we're, I have on this budget that we're appropriating 480,000, I also wrote that it's just a timing thing, and I truly don't believe that we will be appropriating at this time any of it. Of course, with with the volatility of whatever things going on with with this COVID and and the revenue going down, I'm not sure if it's gonna affect this year's budgets or next year. So my year-end ones, there might be a little bit of an adjustment. But if you look at some of this stuff, my department, it's because I had a retirement that we didn't budget for. So we give them a payout when they retire from their their sick banks and everything. So I had to put money in the budget for that, because I don't have the liquidity in my budget to take something from one line to another. There's it's just straight up salaries and and that's it, and some office supplies. When you look at the police budgets, we already had that conversation regarding overtime and the salaries. So we we had that conversation. Fire was the same thing. The biggest part of this is the is the fire. They got two grants that added up to 2.1 million dollars that we received the money. We have spent the money, but we hadn't put them into the budget yet, because, of course, we didn't know this money was coming in until after our budget season. So that's really basically an in and an out. So the biggest grunt of this is really an in and out, and it's all grant funds. So it's not that bad of a big of a deal. And then in ordinance, they're actually just taking from one line and putting it into another. So that's a zero effect. And then the DPW, they had some retirements, so they had more money that they had to pay out. The repairs, they've had some more repairs going on. And then the capital outline, we explained at the study session that these this increase to our budget is items that were approved and put in place in the last year's budget, but did not get paid for until this year's budget. So it's making this year's budget go over, because the money is being spent in this current year, plus he had this year's expenditures. So it's really pretty straightforward, and I really don't believe at this time that we're really gonna appropriate it. It's just the easiest way to make the the budget balance, is just to appropriate.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Somi Authorization Purchase Two Utility Trailers.
Who is the no?
Councilman Bazey.
Thank you very much.
And I was a yes.
All right, if you want, I'll pull it away. Councilman Abdallah?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
No.
Councilman Melonowski?
No.
Three, three nays.
Yep, three nays. It would be Bazey, Wenzel, and Melonowski Maxwell.
Thank you, Council Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda is DPW Director Somi Authorization Purchase Two Utility Trailers.
Council Chair.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move City Council approve the DPW for the Building Maintenance Department to approve the purchase of two utility trailers and authorize payment upon delivery. Attached were three quotes, the department's recommending Joe Trailer Manufacturer in amount of forty, $4,099 for each of her total of $8,198 as outlined in 9L.
Support.
Support. Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Somi Approval to Dispose of Used Equipment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I approve, I, I move that Council approve the disposal of the items listed in 9G. Atty Sweeper, 2001, 2000 GMCC, 8,500 Dump Truck, and a 2007 New Holland Backhoe.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Petrie Request to Purchase and Pay Three Stalker Lighter RLR with Bluetooth.
Which one are you on?
No.
9H.
9H.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I crossed it off in the air, I'm sorry. Okay. Item on the agenda we are discussing is 9H, which is Park and Recreation Director Hadad Authorization for Signature by Mayor and City Clerk for Five-Year Master Plan Professional Services Agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Abdullah.
I'm sorry, Abdullah.
Okay, I move that we concur with Director Brian Hadad, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a five-year master plan professional services agreement between Flice and Vandembrink in the city of Dearborn Heights. Once this is completed, the department can proceed with the master plan process included, and include the community in it, as outlined in Item 9H.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Now we have item, item 9I, which is Police Chief Petrie Request to Purchase and Pay Three Stalker Lighter RLR with Bluetooth.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move Council approve the purchase and payment for the three stalker lasers when officers are using traffic detail. The cost of the lasers is $7,374, and it's been budgeted in the capital outlay of this year's budget, as outlined in 9I.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As long as they don't use them on me.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next, we have Item 9J, which is Police Chief Petrie Request to Purchase and Pay Grace Rebuild Justice Center Security Gate.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Chief of Police Michael Petrie, requesting our approval for purchase and payment for the following replace and rebuild of the Justice Center Security Gates and international controls and equipment, we'll be doing this project. And this expenditure has been put in the capital outlay for the police department for the 2019, 2020 budget. They will need a 50% deposit, and he's requesting a check in the amount of $14,051.50 be cut, so they can begin making the gate, and the remaining amount will be paid upon completion of the project. The total cost of this project is $28,103, is outlined in Item 9J.
Support.
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 Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I guess this is going to be for anyone, but are they going to be able to start work on these gates? I mean, it is a security issue, so I would think that that should be, you know, come under some sort of, the governor shouldn't allow this to happen, I mean, it's a gate company, so, but it's a secure thing for our police department. Are they going to be able to do this, Chief Petrie?
I'd like to share in your enthusiasm, and I appreciate your candor on that, or your ideology on that. This is obviously put on the agenda back in February. We're going to look into it again, I wanted to make sure that we were able to do it first, but, you know, I would like to get it going, these gates are in really bad shape.
I, I've seen them, and they're in real, they're real bad shape, and, and I'm hoping maybe you make a few phone calls, because it is a security issue.
Yes, it is, thank you for your concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions directly related to this item?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Wenzel?
Didn't we address this issue last year, Chief?
Yes, those were for the gates on the west side of the building, these are for the gates on the east side of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Petrie, again, Request to Purchase and Pay Additional Cameras in the Justice Center. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with our Police Chief Michael Petrie, and approve the purchase for the additional cameras in the Justice Center, that costs $18,238 from capital outlay, as outlined in 9K.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next, Police Chief Petrie. Pardon? Okay, next we have Police Chief Petrie Request to Purchase and Pay for Firearms.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Chief of Police Michael Petrie, requesting our Council approval for the purchase and payment of the following. Seventy-five, one, one, five, two, zero, MNP Full Size MS dot zero, and S3 ORD magazines. And the cost for these firearms is $8,250 with a trade-in with old firearms. And the cost for these firearms will be taken from the state fiduciary account, and this is outlined in Item 9L.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Is there, is everybody, anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Next item, we have Fire Chief Program Permission to Pay Priority One Light Commercial Package.
Council Chair, I'm having a hard time finding this on my computer.
This is 9M.
It's on the new cap packet.
It's on the new packet. It's 9M, that's Fire Chief Program Permission to Pay Priority One Light Commercial Package.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Fire Chief Dave Brogan, who's asking permission to complete payment to the Priority One Emergency for installing radios, lights, sirens, and command accessories to B C vehicle. And this payment will be $5,555. The total price was $14,985.67, of which $9,260 has already been paid, and this will be paid from capital outlay upon receipt, as outlined in Item 9M.
Support.
Support by my Councilman Bazey, any discussion?
Council Chair, this may sound a little bit...
Is this a question, Council? We're getting late here.
Yes, I, I want to know what a B C vehicle is.
Hi, Councilman. The B C vehicle is the battalion chief's vehicle, which is, you know, the...
Okay.
And if I, if I could, I did make a mistake on this, it should say the MEDC grant hasn't already paid, MEDC grant will pay $9,260. We already have the funding for that, but we're going to have to write the check to include that, to include that amount. We did get the funding from MEDC through the grant, but I said already paid, and that, it should have said, they will cover that.
Madam Chair.
They will pay that.
All right. Who's, who's, Councilman Abdullah?
Okay, so I amend my motion to state that MEDC grant will pay, I'm sorry, I amend my motion that MEDC grant will pay $9,260, leaving us, our city with the remaining $5,555, as outlined in Item 9M.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next, we have Human Resource Director Soba Perry Agreement with Nyheart for G A S T 75 Study.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that we concur with H R Director Soba Perry on allowing Nyheart, the, is the actuarial firm to be used, as outlined in 9M, they're the same firm that we've been using, and it behooves us to use them again.
All right, thank you. Do I hear support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Petrie Request to Purchase and Pay Remote Mount Radios.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Police Chief Michael Petrie, requesting authorization to purchase and pay upon receipt for the following, three remote mount radios, one remote mount radio with DES encryption. The cost for the projects is $20,495.23. They will be outfitted for the new cars coming into rotation. This project was put into budget under capital outlays, outlined in Item 9O. Or is that, that O?
9O, yes.
O.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Is this going to be these new, new equipment here? Will that be covered under our service agreement that we just got done?
And you talk...
Chief Petrie?
No, that service agreement, I'm assuming you referenced the 9P?
Yes.
Yes, no, that service agreement is specifically to the 911 call taker system, the 911 interface, and dispatch radio communication.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next, we have 9Q?
No, I think we're on P.
9P.
Okay, I was, okay, 9P, Police Chief Petrie Motorola Service Agreement.
Council Chair, I move that City Council approve, excuse me?
Councilman Muscat?
Yeah, I move City Council approve the service agreement with Motorola from March 1st to 2/20 through February 28th, 2021. It's due now, and, and have the, authorize the mayor to sign the Motorola agreement for the period of March 1st to 20 through February 28th, 2/21, for a cost of $63,192 for this year, as outlined in 9P.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next is 9Q. Preparation, one, two, three, appointment of John J. Riley II as City Treasurer.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with our Counselor Gary Miyati, which, this is in regards to City Treasurer John Riley, who has sent us a resignation, and, and at the time was spoke, the appointment was, now we're looking, ah, let's try again. "In the attached email, Treasurer Riley offered to accept the treasurer appointment effective May 1st, 2020, given the circumstances facing the City Treasurer's office and later the pandemic, and he would continue on this position until the City Council finds his replacement and a smooth transition can occur. Further, he emphasized that this is not his intention to stay until November 2020. Therefore, it is a motion by myself, Dave Abdullah, seconded by..."
Ray Muscat.
Ray Muscat, "to appoint John Riley II as City Treasurer to fill the vacancy resulting from his designate, from his resignation as City Treasurer where, where that resignation was accepted by Motion 19462. Pursuant to City Charter 4.5, this appointment of John J. Riley II as City Treasurer shall be for the period from May 1st, 2020, until John Riley's, the second successor shall have been elected and qualified as a result of the next general city, state, or national election for the unexpired term of office." And this is as outlined in Item 9Q.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Just wanted to let our, well, again, our Treasurer John Riley, I, I have so much respect for you for doing this under this, this situation that the city's under, and everything else going on in the world, so, so it's to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next, we have Treasurer Riley's continuation of appointment to the General Government Pension Committee.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that we reappoint John Riley to the General Government Pension Committee, that expires on April 30th to 20, and the term will go through December 31st to 21, as outlined in 9R.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion or questions?
Madam Chair.
Treasurer Riley?
I mean, the letter asked through June 30th, but I would surely accept the appointment through the full term, if that's what the council wanted to do, not knowing who the next treasurer is. So, you know, the, the letter was asking through June 30th of this year, but I would still, I would take, accept the full appointment if that, as the Councilman made in the motion, if that's his desire. But I just didn't want there to be any discrepancy between what was said and what was in the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair, make to amend that motion to do the full term on this.
Second.
Muscat amended it, Councilman Bazey supported. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next item on the agenda, Treasurer Riley Continuational Appointment to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority Board.
Anybody else?
Councilman Muscat?
It's his turn.
I move City Council reappoint John Riley to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority. His expires on April 30th to 20, and his next term commencing on May 1st to 20. And he will be willing to accept the reportment with the term expiring on June 30th, or if he wants to go through the full till November, normal term expires in December 31st to 21. If he wants to accept it through December 31st, that's what my recommendation is, as outlined in 9S.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, any discussion?
Madam Chair, and this one could, if we could just take it till June 30th, until things shake out, and then, or, or, you know, or a little bit longer than that full term. This, this particular board meets during the day, and in the future, it may cause me conflict to attend those meetings during the day. And so, I would prefer a little shorter, I mean, I, if you go beyond June, but I don't know about the full term.
Council Chair, I make them amendment to determine expiring June 30th to 20, 2020, as outlined in 9S.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next, we have Ordinances and Resolutions. This is the second reading for Ordinance H dash two zero dash zero two, Amendment to Chapter 37, Small Cell Wireless Communications Facilities.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to have Ordinance Number H dash 20 dash 02 considered read for the second time and effective upon publication.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Okay, you have a question in regards to this agenda item? Go ahead.
Yeah, based on the gentleman that spoke earlier, so I, I don't know if this was complete, we still don't have the answer, the, the one concern that was mentioned by, was it Verizon? So, I'd be voting no for this, since I don't know if, if that stuff was taken care of from whatever was discussed from back in March, so I don't know. We haven't gotten anything with the proposal. We haven't gotten anything with the proposal wa- was from Verizon that was supposed to be in this agreement, and I don't know if it was implemented in this agreement. We haven't heard nothing about it.
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Councilman Muscat.
Um, let's make clear again, this gives us some rights to where these things go, okay? So without it, we really don't have any rights. So I behoove my board, my fellow council people to accept this. And we can go from there, at least we'll have a little bit of control uh until maybe Lansing and Washington can kind of come to their senses here.
Well, I have to agree with Councilman Muscat. Right now, we have zero control. This gives us some control, not as much as we would like, but we do have most having none.
Madam Chair.
Any, okay, Councilman Bella.
Uh, just want to state, just like I stated the last time, I am totally against this particular thing as far as five G is concerned. A lot of the stuff that I've read on it really, really concerns me. I'm I'm really, really surprised that this thing is still moving forward. I know it's not our council's fault, I know this is more at the federal and at the state level, but I just want to publicly state it that I'm totally against this. And I'm really concerned about the fact that they've been putting a lot of these towers, you know, close to the schools. Uh, there's one right now in Amboy and
I don't mean in a property, we're only going to ask you questions that directly related to this.
Just uh, one.
Just to kind of streamline this whole meeting.
Thank you.
And does anybody have a question related to this?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Wenzel, do you have a question?
Yes, there's now this, what we're voting on, the second reading is that taking into consideration the information the gentleman at the beginning of the meeting stated, or because I don't know what I'm voting on right now, it's 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 because I'm unclear if this it's been it's been addressed or hasn't been addressed, the additions or subtractions of the original ordinance that was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. So I I had to vote no on this, I don't know what I'm voting on.
Councilman Muscat, would you like to explain it? You've done a lot of
You know, Councilman Wenzel, you know, we're trying to have some say on where these towers are going. Right now, we have
We have.
We have nothing. We have nothing. So they can put them up in your backyard and you can't say a thing about it. So if we have this, we have some say of where they can go. Right now, we're we're speechless, we're voiceless. This gives us at least a vo- voice of where they can go.
We have no voice.
Right now, we don't have a voice.
We will, no matter what ordinance we adopt, we will have no voice.
Well, an ordinance is better than no ordinance.
Yep.
And we, at least we can start forward and we've got something to argue with if we have an ordinance, okay? We can at least petition a state or the federal government that they're violating our ordinance. I don't know what else to, how else to explain it.
Well, by accepting an ordinance, that means we accept this process.
Actually, the process will go forward whether we vote for this yes or no. It's going, it's moving forward now. We have no way of stopping it.
That's right.
Is apparently just a way that we can have a little control. Um, but it's still gonna move forward whether we vote yes or no.
I think this five G's even made my phone worse. Cell phone worse, not with Verizon myself. I used to have great coverage, now I don't.
Okay, Councilman, we got Councilman Coniston waiting to speak. Go ahead, please. Councilman Coniston.
Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
I think the concern of the gentleman from Verizon, the attorney, was regarding the attachments which we're not going to adopt. And again, just to echo what Councilman Muscat said. Some control is something that's pretty much been preempted by federal law and state law, unfortunately. To get our money to be paid, to the city to be paid, to have some authority.
Councilman Coniston, we're having trouble hearing you.
Over the right of way.
Yeah, something's wrong with my mic.
There goes.
Um, just to echo what Councilman Muscat said. Uh, I think that the attorney at the beginning said that he had some concern over the attachments, which are really not part of the ordinance and we're not adopting. And just so the public knows, this is so we will have some authority over giving uh the wireless companies, the five G companies, the right of way through our city, which we otherwise would not have, because it's largely preempted by state and federal law.
Okay, any further questions? At this time, let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's do a poll. Councilman Abdullah.
Yes.
Councilman Basy.
No.
Council, Councilman Coniston. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Yes.
Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel.
No.
Councilwoman Melowski, yes. It passes. Next item on the agenda is D P W Director Sami M dot resolution to decertify Howard Cassidy and Parkland Drive.
Which one is that? Not, what is what, nine?
Eleven B.
B, eleven B. D P W Director Sami M dot resolution to decertify Howard Cassidy and Parkland Drive.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Uh, thank you. Move to adopt the resolution as outlined. Eleven B.
Do I hear support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we are on item eleven C under ordinances and resolution. This is a resolution to authorize hazard pay to the Dearborn Heights First Responders Police and Fire during COVID nineteen pandemic. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I move to the City Council adopt the resolution as outlined in eleven C. This is to authorize hazard pay to Dearborn Heights First Responders Police and Fire during COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, that lines, thank you.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bella, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Chair. Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I support this.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I have to let Councilwoman Hicks Clayton go first.
No problem.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a note that there have been several communities across the state of Michigan that have already implemented payment of hazard pay in stipends to first responders and other frontline workers. Uh, we are waiting on clarification regarding the FEMA grant money or the monies that are coming to to COVID nineteen, but I do want to say that I believe hazard pay is crucial to our first responders, medical professionals, and healthcare workers. They enter daily risk when heading to work. The coronavirus pandemic is a hazard. Hazard not only to their first responders, but to their family members, because when they go home, they have to worry about that. So I ask for everyone to take into this, listen to consideration during the rough time that our country is facing right now. Thank you.
Let's move to questions in regards to this actual resolution. Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I I want to support this, but until we see the money coming in, I I I think we should hold up until we get the money to know exactly what we're getting. We may not have the money to pay everybody five hundred dollars a a month. And and what about the D P W workers that go out on emergency calls that have to work close hand in hand and dig holes and repair water main breaks? Uh, you know, they're first responders in a certain way also.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Abdullah.
I had the same concern because it comes out to quite a bit of money, but I spoke with Councilwoman Lisa explaining and we amended it to say it's conditional upon receiving the FEMA funds. Therefore, if we don't receive those funds and the and the mayor and the administration applies and is not able to receive them, then unfortunately, at that particular point, we won't have the funds to be able to pay.
Is that in this motion right now?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. It's in the body of the resolution.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution passes. Next item is new business. This is the application for solicitation license for Saint, for Father Patrick O'Kelly Knights of Columbus, April third to April fifth, twenty twenty.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we approve the application for solicitation by the Father Patrick O'Kelly Knights of Columbus Council for April third through the fifth, which it looks like it's already passed, as outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Basy, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have an application for solicitation license for Carl East American Legion Auxiliary Unit P thirty-two for May second, twenty twenty.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we concur, or I move that we grant the application for license to solicit by the Carl East American Legion Post uh for May second, twenty twenty as outlined in thirteen B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bella, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we open it up to members of the public. This is comment from council members. I ask you make um limit of two minutes. Any comments from the council members?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Basy.
Um, I have a question. I got like few emails in the last few days, maybe week or so about the water, um, the water bills. I guess there's two two concerns, one about delinquent payments. Um, I'd like, I'd like the administration to answer that, if there's going to be delinquent uh payments or uh okay, let me see, okay.
I think Treasurer Riley is already taking care of that. I'm trying to unmute him so he can
So at at any, and any of, um, and this is under the control of the Controller Vance, um, other, but any of the monthly payments that are, we are accepting payments now, but anybody who uh isn't paying now, there's no penalty on the current tax, I mean, the water bills. So if you, if they not, and some people like to pay cash, and since they can't come into City Hall and pay cash, uh, there will be no penalties if they pay when they reopen, you know, later in the month of May, hopefully, uh, or in June. So there are no, all of the penalties are suspended at this point on the current water bills. Uh, we are accepting payments. Um, you can use your online banking to pay your water bill. You can put a check or a money order into our Dropbox, or you could mail it in. Uh, we're we're processing payments, you know, every day here at City Hall. We just can't let the public into the building.
Okay, uh, Mr. Riley, the second, second question, which ties into the water bills. So we have two residents that reached out that they actually have a demand letter that it says that they have to pay by mid-May. Uh, or it's gonna go on their property tax. Is that the same thing with no penalties on this, or would there be a penalty? Or is that date extended, you know, so it doesn't go on their tax with added penalty?
Well, that date can be extended till June first, but um, you know, you know, it would be uh, a big deal not to put those on under the normal course of business uh, in the sense that those bills, a lot, some people don't pay their water bills at all, and then they if we let that go for two years, the amount of delinquencies would be traumatic. I I think it's well over a million and five hundred thousand dollars. You know, so I I I think not to put that on could create a, you know, a hardship um, for the people eventually having to pay then the following year when it all goes onto the bills, under the taxes.
Okay, so for for this purpose, so when I reach back to the residents, should I tell them that date has been extended to June something?
Yes.
Otherwise, what day in June?
At this point.
Okay, June first, because they tried to get ahold of the water department according to them with with no success. So I let them know that June first, otherwise, June first, it would go on their tax, right?
On the taxes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other counsel counter?
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I just want to uh, thank everybody for trying to be safe and and everyone who's helping our our citizens in need. Um, I know each one of us is doing something that's that's helping out and uh, for those who think this is not a real thing, there are people dying of this virus. It 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 doesn't know who, if you're rich or poor, or what color, or what religion you believe in. If you're not gonna be safe and careful, you will get this thing and it could kill you, so I'm I'm begging all the people in our city to be careful.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Just want to take this opportunity just to quickly thank our first responders, whether it's the Police Department, D P W, whether it's a Fire Department and anybody else involved in our city for helping keeping us safe. I'd also like to again tell all the residents to stay home. This has been difficult for me. It's the first time I've been home for this long, so i- i- if I can do it, anybody else can do it. And lastly, just want to wish everybody that practices the Muslim faith, um, happy Ramadan, Ramadan Bada. And we have nothing but peace and serenity for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the table? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I want to expand on what Councilman Muscat has said, and I know there's a lot of great things. People come together and work really hard together during a crisis like this. I want to remind people that if they are in need of food, we do have a food pantry that is do, offering porch pickups as well as deliveries. So if people need food, to let us know, they can call me at three one three, three four eight, nine eight four eight. In addition, with the executive order twenty twenty dash fifty-nine, uh, we see a requirement now in public places to wear a facial mask. And so, um, yep, so, and I asked this question with the Wayne County Health Department today on the Wayne County call about that, of course, and we know public places, meaning grocery store, wherever you go, it's public. But what about when you're out walking your dog or whatever? They did recommend you wear a facial mask when you're going out in general, you know, if you're walking your dog, because you come in contact with somebody or by someone. Uh, so there's that, but what I wanted to tell is that we do have facial masks um that are available to those who don't have access. And if you truly have that need and cannot access a mask, please email me at Hicks Clayton four, the digit four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that is again Hicks, H I C K S, Clayton, C L A Y E Q N, the digit four, D H, city council at yahoo dot com. And we're delivering those masks this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coniston.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank our police, our fire, uh, our D P W for being out there working. Um, it's a very difficult time. I'm sure I join most of the people here in Michigan looking forward to uh the virus not being so contagious and everyone getting back to work and getting our economy going. Uh, I'd remind everybody to take the time to help out their family, our seniors, our disabled. I'm helping take care of my ninety-four-year-old father and ninety-two-year-old mother. Um, I want to wish everyone a peaceful and blessed Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak for those who observe Ramadan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I forgot to
I am sorry. I've got the mayor next, please.
I just wanted to, uh, given this coronavirus, uh, it's led to thirty-one of our residents dying and another three hundred ninety who have been confirmed as having the virus per the Wayne County Health Department. And uh, want to thank the first responders uh, for the great job they're doing, but there's a lot of people that are really helping others. We have uh, Meals on Wheels, we've had seniors, Zaiman International has provided food, other groups. And we have people making phone calls to our seniors to make sure they're okay. I just want to thank everybody for their effort, and I would expect in this crisis, it's it's comforting to know how we're all coming together be, to be part of the solution and to help each other, and I really take that as a great thing for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, um, that's about all the council members, is that correct? Councilwoman was already had the two minutes, sorry.
I had a question about budget, Madam Chair. Uh, we have two minute limit on council members, do we?
Uh, yes, I do. Tonight, I I announced it at the beginning.
Okay. Okay, we should talk about the budget, though.
I'm sorry, but we have that limit today, and I apologize for that. That's not normal, but we're doing it because of how much we have on the thing. And before I turn it over to um Lyberg, I know he's got something to say, I want to say
Council Chair.
This, um, Phil Basy doing the timing, it's It's been a pain trying to keep it up, though. I miss you. Next to me telling me when the timing is up.
Council Chair.
Council Chair.
Um, go ahead.
Who?
Felt Camp?
I was just alerting you to uh, Councilman Wenzel.
Oh, Councilman Wenzel, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, well, I I'd like to thank uh, Doug Doug Felt Camp and uh, Councilman Walt in his entire office and Council Chair for all the hard work they did to get these meetings going. I know it wasn't easy and it actually went off a lot better than most of us anticipated. Thank you very much for all your efforts.
Thank you. Yeah, at this time, I will open it up.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, who's?
It's Walt.
Clerk.
Oh, Walt, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just echo what everybody said about everybody doing a great job. There's I can add to that. Uh, what I would like to say is, um, we will soon this week, I've gotten several calls about the Crestwood and the D seven school board. Um, so we will be posting on our elections website on the and the proper way to um, um, apply for that, those positions in the upcoming November election. Um, also, um, please, 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 folks, um, use the absentee ballot provision um, over the next couple of elections. Um, so many people like to go to polls. I've only used it once in my life. Flood our office with requests to be on the absentee ballot application. Um, we need to keep people um, away and safe and and that is one way of doing it. Um, finally, um, uh, we did um, call every single one of our poll workers. Um, if you recall, May, March tenth was right at the beginning of the pandemic and when the cases first became, um, and Deputy Clerk uh, Bushfield called every single poll worker. I called our absentee ballot workers and by the grace of God, we did not have one person contact the virus. So um, that's wonderful news. Um, everybody stay safe and God bless. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will open it up to public announcements. I know Library Director has some information for the public and accessing our library since it's closed.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Uh, just wanted to touch on a couple of upcoming programs. Um, we're still doing them. First off, tomorrow, Wednesday, April twenty-ninth at seven PM via Zoom, we will be having a program on landscaping with native plants. Uh, join Drew Lathan as he covers techniques to utilize native plants uh, that will help build habitat and healthy outdoor living areas. To access the Zoom link, go to our website at W W W dot D H C I dot Mich Library dot and the link to access the program will be on our front page.
But I'll get put up there, W W W D dot D H C I dot M I C H library dot org backslash.
Yeah. Yes. Oh, my gosh, that's backwards. I'm going to have to learn how to figure that out. Okay, also upcoming on Tuesday, May nineteenth at seven PM via Zoom, we will have a program on Murder Mayhem, Michigan. Join Tobin Buuk as he uncovers some of the darker history of our past and what can be learned from it, hopefully prevent those darker chapters from happening again. A Zoom link to this will be up on our page shortly. I also wanted to mention our new YouTube channel, also accessible from our main page. Again, putting it back up. Painting classes, online storytimes, craft projects, book chats and more can be had there. Um, at around two thousand views so far. I want a lot more of them. Uh, see what wonderful paintings Eileen has done and what mischief Tiberius the Tiger is up to. Uh, finally, I want to say on behalf of the Dearborn Heights Library staff, we miss you. Our staff are working to be ready for our residents when circumstances allow. And like two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we will be there in our residents' time of need. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and hope to see you at the soon at the library.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other announcements, public? Community services?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair. Uh, this is Director Hesum. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hello to everybody. I just want to put a couple of uh, points that uh, part of the stimulus plan, uh, city of Dearborn Heights was uh, awarded six hundred and some thousand dollars. Uh, this amount of money we have to apply for, just like the block grant. I have been working with the administration, Chief Brogan, Chief Petrie and Deputy Chief Myers, along with uh, the uh, Parks and Recreation. So we do have to go through the process. Although that money is awarded to us, we still have to apply for it. Literally, we have to do our public hearing and we have to bring it up to City Council for you guys to approve it eventually. I'm hoping to get that, hopefully by next week, get my public hearing and maybe in the following meeting uh, during City Council, I can bring the program and uh, if anybody should have any questions or concerns or comments, either from the city councils or anybody, please feel free to reach out to me. Uh, I believe you all have my cell numbers, at least the City Council and the department has. And thank you to the chief, the chief and Brian for working with me on this one. And also my staff as well, who have been working diligently on this particular grant. Thank you very much. I hope you all stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public announcements?
Council President, uh, Jack McIntyre is trying to get your attention.
Okay, he's not on this. I I can't, I've got my um, T three two, you know.
I just unmuted him.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to take a minute to, um, I I know they weren't mentioned, but I want to make sure everybody um, understands what our schedule's been like with animal control. Our guys are also first liners. They, since we, uh, since this started, they've been working on a rotating basis to make sure that they're safe and that their families are safe, but uh, they're coming in, uh, responding to all animal calls and some of the more um, pressing ordinance issues that we're having. Uh, we're clearing out messages every day. People should continue to call and report things to the ordinance department. But I wanted to make sure they're recognized too. They have concerns. Uh, big shout out to the police department. They hooked us up with all the PPE equipment that our guys are safe. One thing that's been a little challenging for them, uh, for those of you that have dogs especially, you know that when your face is covered, it makes the dog a little nervous. So with their masks on, um, you know, they've they had an extra challenge with trying to uh, apprehend some of these uh, dogs at large. We've had a lot of animal activity in the last couple of weeks, and the last thing I just want to say is um, there's been a lot of questions and concerns coming in about uh, whether or not you can contact this disease from your pets and what to do if you, someone in your house has uh, the virus and how to isolate your pet. So two things that I'm relying on are the CDC's statements about that. So far, there hasn't been a significant amount of evidence or actually very little evidence that says that uh, animals can transfer the disease to humans, but we do know that humans can possibly transfer it to animals. Uh, so you want to be mindful if somebody in your home does have the virus that you want to try to isolate your pet from from that person. Uh, so for folks that want to get all the correct information regarding that, uh, we posted it today on the Dearborn Heights community page and tomorrow it'll be posted on our city's website, uh, the link to the uh, Center for Disease Control and their official opinion on uh, animals and COVID.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other public announcements? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comments. Once again, the limit tonight is two minutes for anybody who speaks. I'm going to have um, Doug Felt Camp help me look and see if anybody is raising their hand to go and speak. And I am not seeing anything. I'm going to give you a few more seconds here to figure out how to use that if you haven't already done so. I'm not seeing anything. Are you, Doug?
Dana Dana Parrish has raised her hand.
Okay, Dana.
I'm muted.
He's on the second page, I think. I'll find him. Okay, um, Dana, I'm unmuting you. You have two minutes. Hold on a minute. Okay, there you go.
Good evening. Let's uh, tell the other gentleman it's a he, not a she.
I apologize.
I just had uh, one one or a couple of comments. One is uh, I'm glad to see everybody looks to be uh, healthy and hopefully their family members are the same. And uh, the other thing was about the uh, the webpage, the city of Dearborn Heights actual official webpage. And that is that there's a lot of seniors in the city and and I know there's a lot of good information. I mentioned this to uh, Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton on one of her posts that she put on one of the Facebook pages. There's a lot of good information out there. But being on a Facebook page, you know, my mother's in her eighties and we got a lot of folks that are in their their elderly. A lot of them don't get into the Facebook stuff. It's hard to get them on a computer. But those that are on the computer will go to a government webpage, like the city of Dearborn Heights webpage. Unfortunately, it is really lacking. We have to get someone on that webpage and really get this information off of the Facebook page. It's really helpful. Some of the stuff like Lisa does and other council members do, and get it put on our official city webpage. Get our calendar updated, get all that stuff out there so it's really up to date so our residents can really see what's available. Because there's a lot of stuff that folks are doing out there, a lot of.
A lot of.
And unfortunately, it's it's in different places on different Facebook pages. It's not really in one location, which probably should be our actual official city of Dearborn Heights webpage. I can see it back on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Doug, help me once again.
Um, Moto Z did have the hand up at one point. I don't know if that's Dana's.
They no longer have their hand up. Put your hand up now if you want to be acknowledged.
Moto Z, did you have a question? No.
They didn't say. Okay, um, at this point, that concludes our meeting.
I'll move to adjourn.
Councilman Bazey moves to adjourn. Do I hear a support? Support by Mon, okay. I'm sorry, was that you, Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Everyone have good evening and thank you for being here.